Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Here.
Randor Horst.
Here.
DeAnstraw.
Here.
Carlstone.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Corrigan Bassett.
All right, before we start, I want to take a second to introduce our new finance director, Brian Ween, sitting over by Mandy there. Have all of you met him, I think, or had a chance to meet him? So been on board for two, three weeks now. So welcome to Pella and to the city of Pella.
Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion for approval of our tentative event agenda?
So moved.
Or. Manstra Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeAnstraw.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Randor Horst.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. This time we have opportunity for public forum. Forum, anyone wishing to address counsel regarding any agenda item? Please step forward to microphone, state your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
May I am pressing five twelve Lincoln Street, Pella. Mr. Nardini and members of the Pella City Council. I hold in my hands copies of two letters written to you early this summer regarding the local airport versus the proposed regional airport situation. In the letter from John Bowman of Pella Corporation, he informs you that, quote, "The Pella Corporation no longer supports pursuing the South Central Regional Airport, and instead prefers operating out of the Pella Municipal Airport," end quote. He states the considerations that led to their decision and the other states that, quote, "We will plan on investing in a renovation of the pellet hangar to accommodate our fleet, and we appreciate the city of Pella's commitment to make appropriate improvements to the Pella Municipal Airport," end quote. The second letter I have dated May seventeen is from Matthew Hutchinson, the chairman of the Pella Airport Committee. In this letter, he states, quote, "Over the last twenty plus years, a lot of effort has been directed at creating the South Central Regional Airport Authority. Once Mahaska County decided to withdraw as a partner from the twenty eighty agreement, and the Iowa Supreme Court decision was handed down allowing the county to exit, the fate of the South Central Regional Airport was sealed. The current maturation of the Oskaloosa City Council and the mayor to somehow connect Oskaloosa with the ground previously purchased will only bring more litigation and community anger towards the entire project," end quote. Now quoting from an article in the Oskaloosa Herald on August second, quote, "The Oskaloosa City Manager Amal is firm in her resolve that eminent domain will not be used in the city's quest to build the new South Central Regional Airport," end quote. In a recent five-part series by the Herald on the local landowners, they were all very clear that they will not willingly sell their farms. That regional airport is never going to happen without using eminent domain. Going back to Matthew Hutchinson's letter, he also says that, quote, "The reasons for pursuing this airport are rapidly fading with time and new technology. Both Pella Corporation and Remire Corporation have pivoted from continuing to support the regional activity to requesting we reinvest in the Pella facility. We now have a public facility that has been neglected for over fifteen years and won't make it another ten without significant city investment. The recent ramp expansion is a great example of something that should have been funded ninety percent by the FAA, but the city was burdened with the entire expense because the regional airport continues to take precedent in terms of funding from the FAA." In closing, I have two questions for you, the Pella City Council. One, will you support your local businesses, Pella Corporation, and Remire Corporation by pulling out of the regional airport and supporting Pella's municipal airport? Or will you continue to support the regional airport which the Oskaloosa business of Musco is still pushing to happen? Two, in addition to supporting local corporations, will you support your local Pella residents and taxpayers who will be negatively affected if the city of Pella cannot obtain FAA funding for needed work on our local airport because you are still pursuing the unneeded regional airport? As one of those local taxpayers, I would really appreciate to not have to pay more taxes so that you can continue to go after the regional airport dream. Thank you.
Anyone else?
May I ask what agenda item this is?
The airport.
Minutes from the airport committee.
Minutes from the airport.
Okay, okay.
I'm John Ben, a rural Mahaska County resident. I'm speaking on behalf of Airport Commission and your consent agenda tonight. Before you discuss, consent agendas usually are about items you don't want to take time to discuss or nuisance items. But before you call this a nuisance item, I'd like to bring to your attention the frustration of your current Airport Commission. Have you members chosen to attend their meetings? You can see what their frustration is. I know Mr. Nardini has been invited personally to attend those meetings and said he prefers to meet in private with less than a quorum so it does not become part of the public record. And, you know, your airport, according to you, the commission members will not last long enough to build the new South Central Regional Airport. And then today, we had Representative the SCRAA, which is South Central Regional Airport Agency, which is a group chosen by you, which is no longer functioning under the twenty eighty, that you folks choose to ignore it. They had their engineer approach Mahaska County supervisors in regards to closing two twentieth street. One of the requirements for this project to continue. The supervisors tabled the measure indefinitely, so the airport is not moving forward at all. And yet your airport continues to deteriorate. As the previous speaker has spoken, you have two businesses, major businesses here in town that support rebuilding the current Pella Airport. Instead, it seems that the SCRAA wants to support a business in Oskaloosa. One business. And apparently the council here is afraid to take action on this. So my question to you, do you support the one, uh, two businesses of Remire's and Pella Corp? Or do you support Musco in Oskaloosa? If you support Musco, I would encourage you to read today's Oskaloosa Herald and read Supervisor Mark Rundike's comments on Musco. And better still, I encourage you to find the video of it and see his full statement there. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, along, thank you, motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Or. Manstra Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeAnstraw.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Randor Horst.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to proclaiming Tuesday, October thirty first, twenty twenty-three as Bakers Night in Pella, Mike.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, for those in attendance and those walking at home on fiber, I'd like to direct your attention to the big board for a brief presentation on this item. Mayor, the words stated, what this motion would do is proclaim October thirty first, uh, Tuesday, October thirty first, as Bakers Night in the city of Pella approved by the city council. Bakers Night would be held from six p.m. to eight p.m. on the thirty first. It is important to note that we did discuss this issue during policy planning on August fifteenth, the council during the staff proceeded to consider this item. So, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. If you weren't happy answering the questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Or. DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Randor Horst.
Yes.
DeAnstraw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Uh, discussion to reschedule the regular council meeting on November seventh, twenty twenty-three due to the election, Mike.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, staff is requesting that we reschedule our normally scheduled meeting on November seventh to Monday, November fifth. So it does not conflict with the schedule. This whole election is on the seventh.
Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Or. Brandon Horst, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeAnstraw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolution number six, number six, six, one, two, entitled Resolution Authorizing Execution of An Application for Voluntary Annexation of Certain City-Owned Property, Excepting For Filing Applications for Voluntary Annexation of Certain Land to the City of Pella, Iowa, Setting the Date for a Public Hearing and a Consultation Meeting and Providing Per Notice of Proposed City Council Action, Mike.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor, the words stated, really what this resolution does is initiates proceedings for voluntary annexation of the highlighted area that we have up on the big board. And specifically, if you were to go out on Washington Street, Highway G twenty-eight, this right-of-way area is the area that we are talking about and proposing for annexation into the city of Pella. The green highlighted area is already right-of-way, that's owned by the city of Pella. The brown highlighted area is Marion County. Then we have the small piece that is currently owned by the Iowa Rural Utilities Association, formerly known as the Central Iowa Water, Water Association. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now specifically, uh, what this resolution also accomplishes, it approves the city's voluntary annexation for our right-of-way that we own along with Washington Street. It also establishes in accordance with state law the consultation date for the, for the annexation, which will be conducted on September twelfth. Now, if the council were to proceed with this resolution, which will authorize the city staff to do is take any and all necessary act, action to complete the annexation. And we would also have formal consideration on this item on November sixth as well. So ultimately, what's being proposed is annexation of just over five acres of property that is largely right-of-way and into the city of Pella. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation this evening.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Randor Horst.
Yes.
DeAnstraw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six, six, one, three, entitled Resolution Approving Change Order Number One, Final Quantity and Adjustment Mislenious Items in Accepting the Public Improvements for the Old City Hall Alley Reconstruction Project, Mike.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct your attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. As Mayor, the words stated, considering this change order number one, the Old City Hall Alleyway Project, in disorientated one, uh, the area that we're talking about, the Old City Hall area is this highlighted area. Most people would recognize, um, by the bakeries that are located up on Franklin Street. The former Happy Joe's, Dollar General, Subway stores located right here. And the area that involved the reconstruction project, I would like to state complete reconstruction, is the purple bluish area that we're looking at up on the big board. And specifically, we had a concrete replacement. We also did on top of the concrete street, a brick overlay on the street. In addition, all utilities in the alleyway were replaced as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. How far is the final change order that we have this evening? It's in a total amount of five thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. Council would approve this change order. We'd be left with the final contract amount of just over five, well, just under five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Now, our engineer on the project is guardian associates and they are recommending acceptance of the project as they believe it has been completed in accordance with plans and specifications approved by the city council. And staff is also of the opinion as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. If you weren't happy answering the questions the mayor council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Or Hopkins, DeYoung, discussion? Last improvement, that's for sure. All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Randor Horst.
Yes.
DeAnstraw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six, six, one, four, entitled Resolution Approving a Twenty Eighty Agreement for Ambulance Emergency Medical Services, Mike.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor, the words stated, what we're entering into this evening is a twenty eighty agreement for the non-government folks that are reviewing this presentation. Really what a twenty eighty is, is just a contract under Iowa law. Typically, it's a contract between governmental entities. In this case, the proposed contract that we have is to provide ambulance, uh, ambulance emergency medical services areas that are located outside the city of Pella. And the easiest way to describe this area is when we look at the township to which it belongs, which would be the Lake Hurry Township of Marion County, the Summit Township of Marion County, the Black Oak Township in Mahaska County, along with Bridge Lane Township in Mahaska County, and the city of Pella. And the ambulances service area is this black highlighted area, you know, if you're seeing up on the big board. Now, as council is well, well aware of it, we began providing ambulance service from the city on July first, two thousand and twenty-two. Prior to the city taking over the public domain ambulance, this area did receive ambulance services from the prior nonprofit agency. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the key terms of the agreement, the agreement that we are considering tonight, the term actually began tonight, if, or actually today, rather, if the city council were to approve this agreement, it would extend through June thirty of two thousand and twenty-four. It is important to note, even though we do have a formalized twenty eighty agreement, we've been operating and providing service to this area since, since the city began, um, providing ambulance service on July first, two thousand and twenty-two. Now, as far as the compensation that is being proposed for the last fiscal year, so that would have been the fiscal year that was completed on June thirty of two thousand and twenty-three, the payment amount from these entities is thirty-six thousand dollars. For this fiscal year, or the fiscal year that would conclude on June thirty of two thousand and twenty-four, it's a forty-six thousand dollar, um, payment. Now, it is important to note, under the twenty eighty agreement, any party can withdraw, but in the case it, it is one of the entities that receives service from the ambulance, one of the conditions in the agreement is that they would be obligated to pay for EMS services through the date of termination. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes, I actually got a little bit more. All righty, now, the short time period on it, we just want to stress to council, the reason why we're looking through an agreement through June thirty of two thousand and twenty-four is we anticipate that there could be a potential referendum in our community as well as Marion County next spring. So this agreement is really situated to get us through the referendum on it as well. And so that is the reasoning for the, the period or the short time period on this agreement as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes the staff presentation. If you weren't happy answering the questions the mayor council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Answer, Brandon Horst, any discussion?
Mike, the black line is what the ambulance primarily serves, those purple lines are township borders?
Yes.
Will this agreement extend the ambulance's black line to township borders?
I don't believe so, that, that emergency medical services area has been set for a number of years on this.
I think that purple line is that city of two mile influences.
Asking corrected, you are correct, Councilmember Manstra, that's our two-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction on it, so I stand corrected. But to answer your question, there is a portion in the summit township over here where we serve about seventy-five percent of the summit township. The remaining twenty-five percent, is my understanding, receives ambulance services from the city of Menreel. So it doesn't quite match up to all the townships that is provided by, through this agreement, um, the, the service lines are, you see up here in the black highlighted area.
Anything else? All right, a vote, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please, all vote.
DeAnstraw.
Yes.
Randor Horst.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number ten, twenty-nine, entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter one twenty-two of the City Code of the City of Pella, I, for the purpose of adding regulations related to mobile food units, and this is the first reading, Mike.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, actually, what we have here is actually three proposed ordinances that we are imposing. They're all associated as mobile food units, so we'll do one presentation of, we have three separate ordinances that we are considering this evening. Now, as council is aware, we've held, uh, previous work sessions on this, made in essence what these three ordinances would do, where they would create a separate, um, terminology or definition for a mobile food unit. Most people would typically associate this mobile food unit with typically a food truck on there. And the key, but, key issue in why this ordinance was needed is under the city code, currently food trucks are defined as pedlar, and the pedlar is lumped in with pedlar permit, and it's completed some complications from the city's standpoint in administering, um, food trucks in our community. And I would also like to mention that Councilmember Brandon Horst and all of councilmembers forward, possibly the city staff, on drafting these ordinances and what's being proposed this evening. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as we stated, um, on here, what we're doing is we're creating a separate definition as what constitutes a mobile food unit, and this is the, up here on, on the big board. And that's really starts off with and establishes the groundwork, uh, rules for what is being regulated or how food trucks will be regulated within our community. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as where food trucks would be allowed to operate traditionally, as being defined as a pedlar, they were traditionally limited to zoning districts or commercial zoning districts. So on the map that you see up on the big board, it'd be any area that is color-coded green. That's where currently pedlers are allowed to operate. With the mobile food unit, mobile food units would be allowed not only to operate in the green area, but also in the purple, or what some people may call bluish areas that we have listed on the ordinance. Specifically, mobile food units would be allowed to operate within community commercial districts along with M one and M two, and that, and that stands for is limited light industrial along with heavy industrial districts, along with institutional districts. And this would be in addition to community commercial, uh, or commercial zoning districts. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, one of the key items and, and the reasons why we're creating this separate definition for mobile food, uh, food trucks on this is mobile food units, what's being proposed would now be required to conduct a design review or obtain the design review permit for the locations that they operate that we've shown. So unless they're in, they operate either in the central business district or commercially zoned property on Washington Street from Highway one sixty-three to the central business district. So anywhere that you see here that is located in green at the mobile food unit, would operate on that, it would still need to obtain a design review permit. For all there is, there would be no design review permit that would be required. So let's go ahead, Mandy. Now, we've listed on some of the requirements that we have for mobile food units, and this has been one of the others, I think, cause all this confusion and probably some consternation over the years as far as the background checks required for mobile food units. And really what this ordinance shifts to is when we talk about mobile food units, they're going to be required to provide their state of Iowa mobile food unit license. That's going to be one of the key requirements to operate within the city of Pella as well. Now, as far as the Ds, uh, they're very similar to what's, not very similar, but the same as what's being proposed for ped, or permits will currently exist, rather, for peder permits as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, listed up on our last slide is just a summary of the three ordinances, and each one of them adds various elements of the definition of mobile food units, various sections of the city code. And finally, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to also state that the city attorney has reviewed and approved the ordinances that we are considering this evening. So with that, that concludes the staff presentation on this item. We'd be more than happy to answer the questions the mayor council may have on this item.
All right, so we'll start with ordinance number ten, twenty-nine. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Or. DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion?
Can I make a motion to set aside the rules and place this first one, or do you want to do this all at the end?
Yeah, we need to approve the motion first.
Do you want the, and, do you want one singular motion to set aside and waive?
I assume we need to vote on these all separately, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
But we'll.
Just let me know.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Randor Horst.
Yes.
DeAnstraw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Now you make your motion to waive.
I move to set aside the rules and place on third and final reading.
Okay, so moved. Okay, Brandon Horst, DeYoung, any discussion, question? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horst.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeAnstraw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
So moved.
Brandon Horst, DeYoung, any questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horst.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeAnstraw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. So moving on to ordinance number ten, thirty, entitled An Ordinance Amending Section one twenty-three point one six of the City Code of the City of Pella, Iowa, for the purpose of adding regulations related to mobile food units. I believe we've heard what we need to hear, so is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved.
Brandon Horst, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horst.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeAnstraw.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on third and final reading.
Or Brandon Horst, DeAnstraw, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horst.
Yes.
DeAnstraw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to adopt.
So moved.
Brandon Horst, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeAnstraw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving to ordinance number ten, thirty-one, entitled An Ordinance Amending Section one seventy-one point fourteen of the City Code of the City of Pella, Iowa, for the purpose of revising the fee description to add mobile food units. Any motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved.
Brandon Horst, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeAnstraw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on third and final reading.
Brandon Horst, so moved. Manstra, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horst.
Yes.
DeAnstraw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to adopt.
Move to adopt ordinance number ten, thirty-one, so moved. Also, Brandon Horst, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horst.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeAnstraw.
Yes.
Motion passed. I was quick through three ordinance. So if you have a food truck, if you have a food truck you want to open tomorrow, you got all the approval you need in certain spots around town.
That's right. Now we eat people.
All right, moving on to abstract, the bills number twenty-one, thirty-four. Can I get a motion for approval?
Move to approve and issue warrants.
Brandon Horst, DeYoung, any discussions, what discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horst.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeAnstraw.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Counsel, anyone have any other business you want to address this evening?
I just, um, wanted to thank the two representatives from the airport. It's, I know it's been hard and frustrating, and it's, it's, um, something that's been difficult to figure out. I think we have an amazing local airport. I think that, um, Shane is one of the biggest assets to our community. And I too wish we would take a harder look at it so we could perhaps come to some conclusions and some answers. But you gave a very thoughtful presentation, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Would you folks elaborate on the study that has to take place for the FAA? Another study coming up out here on the airport.
I think what you're referring to, and if I'm correct, and if I'm wrong, Councilmember DeYoung, is to make large-scale improvements to the Pella Municipal Airport. You're required under FAA regulations to have an airport layout plan, and council recalls, we actually have funding in this year's budget for the layout plan on it as well, which we anticipate, because I think the council here very soon. But what a layout plan does is it, it lays out the necessary improvements and devises kind of a comprehensive plan for improvements that would likely be justified or needed at the airport over a twenty-year period. So that's really what needs to take place before major investments can take place in the Pella Municipal Airport.
Anything else? All right, any member of the public have any other business you'd like to address council with? If so, please step forward to mic, state your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Nina Fisher, fifteen forty-six, Pleasant Drive. So there's just a few items that I'd like to bring to the council's attention. The first item is this. Um, I, I believe this was something that was mailed out to pretty much everybody in Pella. I believe this was something that was mailed out to pretty much everybody in Pella, I believe. So a part of this, it says, it says, a board of trustees separates library governance from political influence and safeguards intellectual freedom. So I have a thought about that. I'm curious, are, are any of you aware of the author that attended an event at the end of July? Do you guys, okay. So I was wondering, typically, you know, they have this nice area that says library events on here, and typically, it's all on there, but for some reason, this time it wasn't in July. So I'm wondering, are you guys aware that it was a transgender author named Diana, I'm going to butcher this, Gorch? Gorch, is that correct, Mara? And that's not written, okay, I'm not sure how it's pronounced. But anyway, it's formerly known as Douglas to speak at our library. This wasn't something that was broadly advertised, like other library events, that they typically put on the letter that comes in our city, Pella Bill. So that's why I'd ask if you guys were aware of that. Anyway, I and several others went to listen to the author, and what we found to be especially disappointing was that this author took approximately fifteen minutes at the beginning of the event to be extremely political. And what I mean by that is the author was throwing conservative groups under the bus. Conservative groups like Moms for Liberty, I don't know if you've heard of them, they're all across America. It talked about supremacy of certain groups, and this author talked about working to make changes to red state libraries all across America. So, so much for keeping political influence out of our library. The second item is this. I belong to a Pella-based group called Protect My Innocence. We are a group of people who are against the grooming and sexualization of children and minors. While many people have said that we are anti-LGBTQIA, I can promise you, that is not the case, as I have friends that are in that group. Several of us do. In fact, we are the only group that's opposing this kind of indoctrination. I don't know if you guys have heard of Gays Against Rumors? They're a group that's also fighting with Protect My Innocence. So, so right here, they're against propagandizing, pro, pro, excuse me, they're against propagandizing, boy, that's a big word, youth with LGBTQ plus media, so they are against that as well. It's not just us. As a matter of fact, they've said that they're disappointed with what's happening in libraries because it's making people in this group look bad, which it really is. And finally, I'd like to bring to your attention the regard regarding the Federal Communications Commission. A federal law prohibits obscene and decent and profane content from being broadcast on the radio or TV. I know this to be true as a group of moms and dads tried to speak with a news broadcaster, I'll leave his name out, but it's, because he's not there anymore, but his name is Mr. Price, from Channel thirteen news, when they were covering a story from the Capitol. When a mom attempted to show him some of the books we're talking about, Protect My Innocence is talking about, he immediately got angry and said that he wasn't allowed to show or read such things on TV. So I ask you, why is it that these materials can be easily accessed by our kids at our public library, but against the law to be shown on TV? Now, to me, there's something very wrong with that kind of reasoning, and unfortunately, to the detriment of our children's innocence. And it's we, the taxpayers, that are paying for it. If you have any thoughts or questions, I'd be happy to talk to you about it later.
Anyone else? All right, we will adjourn to a policy of planning to discuss Marion County multi-jurisdictional, multi-hazard mitigation plan.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, what we're looking for tonight is feedback from the Pella City Council, and also to answer any questions the council may have on the Pella portion of the Marion County multi-jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan. Now, it is important to note, as we discussed the plan, and specifically, the Pella portion of the plan, that this requirement in our generating the hazard mitigation plan is a requirement of the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act as well. It's also a requirement of FEMA as well. Now, Marion County has taken the lead on this item, and they've hired a consultant to assist in planning and the drafting of the mitigation plan. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, we have a couple of things before we turn this over to the police department to serve as the lead agency for the city of Pella in drafting the plan on this. Couple of things to keep in mind by adopting the plan, so we proceed with formal consideration of the plan. By adopting that or approving the plan of the Pella portion of this, even though it's a part of a larger mitigation plan for the entire Marion County, where the city of Pella is not in, under any obligation to perform another jurisdiction's plan, or any type of liability to do so as well. Now, again, this goes without saying, that goes without saying, the point of having multi-jurisdictional plans is tailored to encourage local jurisdictions to plan to lessen disaster damage, and that's what the overall goal of the mitigation plan is. So with that, Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and turn over an overview of the plan to Chief McShayhee. As the Pella Police Department was the lead agency for the city of Pella drafting the Pella portion of the plans, so Chief.
Thanks very much. So yes, what we're talking about is a multi-jurisdictional plan. It is important to note, just like Mike had stated, that we're really talking tonight just about the city of Pella's profile. What's interesting about this mitigation plan is that this comes around every five years. The city does review annually mitigation strategies and makes corrections along the way. But the five-year plan really revolves around FEMA's requirements for not only applying for grants, but also having the ability to apply for certain federal funding should a disaster strike. So that's really the importance of this plan, is to have some forward thinking about, you know, what are some areas in which we need to look at ahead of time rather than in real time. It's also important to realize that this is a citywide cooperation, so a big thanks to all the other directors involved in providing input in this. This kind of falls under the purview of the police department, just to kind of organize. But it's interesting to note that the last five-year plan was done back in two thousand and sixteen, so if you count five years, two thousand and twenty-one, we just come out of COVID. So this is why we're just a little bit behind on this, or, or, you know, a few minutes rather. And I was going somewhere with that and lost track. Anyway, the highlights of this plan really are to look at citywide, and what are some issues that we foresee coming up? What are the mitigation strategies? We estimate a cost attributed with those, and then we track the successes or the ongoing projects of those particular strategies. Again, what it does is it, without promise, obviously, it opens up a little bit more availability, and that's the key word, is availability to funding should a project that we identified become part of a disaster item or something were to happen, and we've already identified that. We let the FEMA know that we've already identified that, we're taking steps in that direction to help mitigate whatever it is, damage, loss, et cetera. So it's really kind of a top-down, without getting into the, I think it's an eighty-six-page document for Marion County, Pella Police, excuse me, the city of Pella has its own profile, as do the other jurisdictions who are named in the multi-jurisdiction strategy. Happy to answer any questions.
So this is, you've worked on a profile for the city of Pella?
That's correct.
This require all jurisdictions to approve this? Everyone has to do the, to adopt the plan?
So the city council, what we're asking tonight is direction. We're looking at the entire plan, Marsha, please correct me if I'm wrong, the entire Marion County plan is looking or estimating that this multi-jurisdictional plan, based on all of the jurisdictional profiles, will be set into action or approved by FEMA in September. So we're right there at the cusp. We need an action by council to approve our part. We don't have anything to do with the other jurisdictions or their profiles.
Do the supervisors have to approve the county-wide plan?
That's a great question. I think they have to, they have to approve the Marion County's portion.
But not everybody put together?
It's my understanding that's correct.
You said September, it is September, so it's this September?
It is indeed, yes.
So this needs to get on the next council meeting if we approve it, right?
Yes, that would be my recommendation, sir.
Mind it really interesting that this should come up. I've had numbers of people come to me and say, disaster in Hawaii, was there no plan? Was there no planning? What is it like here in Pella? Do we have a plan? So very comforting to know that there are plans made, it's just a plan, at least there's a plan. I know we got the whole thing in our package, so I'm sure you all studied that from front to back. So I guess the council is certainly in support of moving it forward. It's good to plan and have a plan, we just have to make sure we do, be ready with the plan if something does happen. So.
Thank you.
I guess I have one question that came up in my mind during years to a time. Account our size, the jurisdictions around us, their size, I assume everyone is taking into account the influx of hundreds, thousands of people during, you know, limited timeframe.
Great question, and I appreciate bringing that to the forefront. So we do an incident action plan on Tulip Time, and we include all of our stakeholders, not just here locally within the city of Pella, but we also include our partners, emergency services partners as well. And we sit down, we talk about these things, and we, we look at what we could have done better last year, and we look at some of the intelligence for this year. And we all sit around and we develop this, you know, incident action plan. It's approved by all stakeholders, and we all know going into those large events, what's expected, and what everybody's role is and so forth, so good question.
Okay, anything else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
Banstrom, Hopkins, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeAnstr?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
We are adjourned.